For the record, it's 5:15 PM on Thursday, August 23rd, 2018. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. First item would be the pledge to our flag. Whose turn? Councilmember Esparza, your turn?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Esparza. And for the record, we have six councilmembers here today. Councilmember Harold is representing the city in Masawa, Japan, our sister city delegation this week. So we wish her the best. First item on tonight's agenda, the consent items, including an agenda that has one revision to it, vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings. I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers and minutes from previous meetings with the addition to the agenda of item H. This is amendment number one to the inter-agency agreement, refueling of motor vehicles between the Public Utilities District Number One of Chelan and the City of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markart, to approve the agenda as amended, adding item H regarding PUD refueling, the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item would be citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience could address the council on something that's not on this evening's agenda. Yes, sir. Come on up.
All right.
Give us your name and address for the record, and we'll give you three minutes or so.
Okay. I guess I'll sit down. My name is John Compton, and I live here in Wenatchee. I have my daughter, whose name is Kiara, and she's 14, my lovely wife, who's a nurse who works here in the valley. And when we moved here, we moved real close by the hospital. And so what I'm asking, and I'm not sure if I'm going about it the right way, but I'd like to see if we could have our city code changed and modified so that we could have opportunity to build a non, well, build a primary accessory dwelling unit where we live. But to be able to have the code adapted to where if we moved, we could keep that as a non-primary rental.
So I don't know where we're at with that planning and zoning.
We're in the middle of our housing stage, so your timing's really good to participate. If you'd like to get an opportunity to coordinate that if you'd like.
Okay. So why don't, you guys can do it right now, right over there in the corner. You two can exchange cards, and we'll see what we can do. So we're just starting the process. We're going to encourage those sort of dwelling units. I think the bigger issue is, do they have to be owner-occupied house with a dwelling unit, or can you? And I think that's part of the code that we're going to have to work our way through. Perfect. You're good. Thanks, John. Anybody else wish to address the council on something? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Seaman, 1111 Okanagan Avenue. I am a member of the United Neighborhood Association of South Wenatchee, and I just wanted to thank the council for your support on putting money towards South Wenatchee and helping out with particularly the south, Chelan Avenue extension. I haven't been able to participate heavily, but I was able to spend a couple of days with the sidewalk art. And I just wanted to express our gratitude to the council for your support. So, thank you.
You bet.
You bet.
Thanks, Mark. Hopefully, there's more of that coming.
I hope so, too.
Anybody else wish to address the council on something that's not on this evening's agenda? Seeing no other takers, we will start working through our action items. First item is regarding Saddle Rock Department of Ecology Agreement. David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Dave Erickson, Parks Recreation Director for the city. First item I have tonight is something that we've been working on since 2012, essentially, and this is the agreed order for Saddle Rock to clean up the waste rock piles up there. This is obviously a very heavy ecology-weighted agreed order because it's their order that is telling us what we need to do up there. So this is the first step in that cleanup process, following the agreed order, then this becomes part of the MACHA grant, which is the funding then to help pay for that. So because the funding wasn't going to be able to pay for the entire project, we split it up into two phases. First phase would be the lower kind of rock piles because they're easier to pick. And then the second phase, hopefully, we'll learn a few things after that first one, then we will work our way up the hill and take care of those higher ones. When everything is all said and done, hopefully, here in a couple of years, you'll have restored habitat as well as a new trail system going up to the top and back.
When do we expect construction? When do we expect other sort of things to start happening up there?
Yeah, you won't see any on-the-ground work till probably next year. At best-case scenario, I would say end of next year. There's a lot more engineering that needs to happen before now and then.
What kind of effect is this going to have on public access, David?
It would be closed during the heavy construction periods. At this point, it's hard to say how long that would be. You know, it could be anywhere from a month to probably tops 90 days. We're going to try to do it during the heat of the season when it's less desirable to be up there. And then follow up with plantings then in the fall when the plants have a better opportunity to reestablish.
Thank you.
Ultimately, through both phases, we end up with pretty much a whole new trail all the way to the top with stormwater sort of drainages and that sort of thing?
Yeah, that's the hope, that we can restore the natural drainage channels. You know, the road wasn't actually ever really designed. They just kind of pushed a road up there. So by doing this, we'll have properly graded roads, so the water's going to drain off. We won't get the Grand Canyon down the center of the trail like we have now. Culverts where we need them, and then also some additional slope work up there. So that's the hope, anyway.
Okay. So that's five years down the road?
Yeah, I'd say five to six, probably start to finish if funding and everything goes smoothly.
All right. Any other questions for David? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that the council authorize the mayor to sign an agreed order between the City of Wenatchee and the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Gold Knob Prospect Site.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature on the agreed order between the City of Wenatchee and the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Gold Knob Prospect Site, most commonly known as Saddle Rock. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I've got the next two also.
You do. Centennial Park Facility Use Agreement.
Yeah, so earlier this summer, the museum approached us and said they didn't have enough parking for their staff for their summer programs, which I guess is a nice problem to have. And so they requested that we do a facility use agreement for a portion of the parking at Centennial Park that they could put out and have reserved kind of parking spots. So it'd be six of the 10 spaces down there, Monday through Thursday, for the 10-week period that they run their summer programs from 8:00 to 4:30. So really, that's the least amount of time that the park is used anyway, so it seems like it would accommodate their uses and satisfy their program needs.
Is there general parking there regularly? Cars using that spot?
You know, not so much during the week, during the day. It's really, it's, and the ones that we do, it's pretty rare that we have the entire lot full. So this would still allow for about four spots for general, regular park use, as well as all the parking along the street, Wenatchee Avenue, too. This was reviewed by the Arts and Rec Park Commission, and they unanimously recommended approval. It's also for a two-year period, so it's for this summer and next summer because we're late in the year this year, so it really doesn't take effect. And then we'll reevaluate it next, at the end of next year, to see if it's working.
Okay. Any questions for David? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for the city council to approve the facility use agreement with the Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center as recommended by the Arts, Recreation and Parks Commission.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Esparza, second by Councilmember Markart, to approve the facility use agreement with Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center as recommended. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the community garden space naming.
Yeah, so this is the third item, and you have way more background information than you probably ever want to see in the agenda report, but I figured better put it in than rather have you ask for it later. So you've got kind of the background of how the community garden came to be, how it was operated initially, and then where we ended up with this naming request. So earlier this spring, we received a request to actually change the name of the garden from just the community center, Community Garden, to the Caesar Chavez Garden. So that went to the Arts Recreation Park Commission, and we followed the park, adopted park naming guidelines and process. So from that May commission meeting, we went out and did a couple of months of public outreach where we contacted all the current gardeners, all the people that donated for, to the garden to construct it, as well as then it was really well-covered through all the local media. We also had it on social media and things like that. Through that, through that process, then, we received one additional name, and that was from the Lions Club. They also requested that it be called the Wenatchee Central Lions Community Garden. All that information, as well as the individual comments, went to the Arts, Rec and Park Commission at their July meeting, and they discussed it. And they recommended it by a 3-1 vote to name the garden the Caesar Chavez Community Garden, with the Lions Club being their second, second-ranked name. And so it's coming to you with their recommendation for approval.
David, just to be clear, I feared you used kind of two different terms here. Will the actual name be the Caesar Chavez Gardens or the Caesar Chavez Community Gardens? I think, you know, it's obviously, without the word "community" in there, it's not his garden because he's not here anymore. But my personal feeling is it is a community garden, and that ought to be reflected in the name.
Yeah, the commission recommended the Caesar Chavez Garden. And it was interesting, some of the comments that we received from the current gardeners down there, and our office staff called, called as many as they could get a hold of. And the term "community" seems to be confusing to the community, where they feel that it's a garden just for anybody. They can just go down there and pick the fruit and pick the vegetables and take them home, and so the term "community" is a bit confusing, and so they wanted to kind of pull that out of, out of the name.
One way to cure that, at a community garden I'm familiar with, are signs that explain in both English and Spanish that they're individual plots and it's not yours. I guess is the, is the way to put it. And then there's also just general vandalism, if you felt it.
Yeah. That's something they do experience down there.
Well, I'm kind of leaning a little bit with Jim, that I think the word "community" is pretty important there, and the other issues could be addressed another way, but...
You certainly have the right, as the council, to name it the Caesar Chavez Community Garden. If there's a, you have the right to do that. You're ultimately the ones that make that decision.
I think the name is very fitting, but I agree, we need to put "community" in there.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Let me ask this. If we, now, this is managed by the Community Action Council. Do we have a way to assist in providing the signs? As I mentioned, the master gardeners put two up in East Wenatchee that might be good models for that, and they're prominently on a fence. The difference there, this one might be, some fence locations might block additional sun for some of the gardeners. I don't know. But would we have some funds that we could help with the sign, signing about the garden and the garden rules?
We don't currently in our, in our budget. I know the community, Cascadia Conservation District is working on a community garden with a shed and a few other things, so we could approach them and ask.
And we could accept private donations toward that as well, or they, the Community Action could.
Community Action could.
Okay. Well, I, I like the idea of the community name in the garden, and I wouldn't mind trying to figure out with CAC how we could provide, and maybe the master gardener program, too, to provide some funding for the signs.
Yeah, I think we should, if signage is what would help understand what a community garden is in terms of, I can't go pick the tomatoes, even though I might want them. If we could do some signage in both English and Spanish that helped with that, I have no problem with the city figuring out how to make that happen and getting that done. All right, so then I guess I'm looking for a motion on how you guys want to name the park. Oh, excuse me, the community garden, or the garden, excuse me.
I'll make a motion for the city council to approve of the name of the Caesar Chavez Community Garden as the official name of the community garden space at the Wenatchee Community Center, and authorize the applicant to design and install signs consistent with the city sign code and specific community center agreements as recommended by the arts, you know, it's not recommended by the arts, right? As recommended by the city council.
That's all right.
With this addition.
With this addition.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Poyer, a second by Councilmember Esparza, to have the city council approve the name the Caesar Chavez Community Garden as the official naming, name of the community garden space at the Wenatchee Community Center, and authorize the applicant to design and install signs consistent with the city's sign code and specific community center agreements. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
WSU Planning Grant, Steve King. We've got the next two items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, Economic Development Director. About a year or two ago, WSU decided that they wanted to surplus some property on the westerly edge of their spring water site. And as you may know, the school district owns beyond that, up the hill, up by the canal. So they were doing that for budget reasons, and given it was an old orchard and there was a spray filling station there, there's a high likelihood that there's some environmental contamination. So we investigated the possibility of getting an integrated planning grant to investigate the site, to see what kind of contaminants are there. And then those planning grants also look at the final use, what's the best and most appropriate final use of the property. So we made application to Department of Ecology, kind of didn't have, didn't expect to get it, but they found out that there, we were interested in looking at opportunities for housing that would support education, all the way from med school students, researchers, interns, to, you know, the faculty or the research scientists that come to the cooperative extension there. So anyway, ecology funded it, and we've been working with WSU to see if they're interested in a partnership to do this work, and they are interested. We're working through some of the final details, so I'm asking, I'm asking the council for authorization for the mayor to sign a grant agreement with Department of Ecology. We still have a few details to work out with WSU, but we wanted to get this, this step covered and prepare to move forward.
So this is something that was actually put into legislation last year, or just an ecology grant?
This is ecology grant, a grant, yeah. This one's, they, WSU did get $75,000 to Senator Hawkins for additional planning work, so that might actually get married up with this.
Okay.
Yep.
So once the property's cleaned up, what's the next step for that property to develop it into housing? Is it something?
There's a, there's a number of different outcomes that can happen. WSU Tri-Cities broke ground with a program where the WSU provided the property, and a developer came in and built housing as a private housing project with the priority requirement that had to be researchers or, you know, tied with the school first. And if there were other empty units, then they could rent it out to other folks as well. So that worked out pretty well in Tri-Cities, and so that's a model that we could certainly follow. There are other models that would also work.
So who ultimately is the owner of the properties still, then?
In that case, it would be WSU would retain ownership. Other, there would be another, there could be other models where maybe the housing authority or somebody else takes ownership of it. But the idea would be is that would be designated housing or for research-type facilities.
So surplusing this and then getting us involved was just to kind of help get this grant going, to do the cleanup? Does, I'm just still trying to figure out the city's role in this.
Oh, sure, you bet. So if we didn't do anything, WSU would probably put a for-sale sign on it, likely sell to a private developer who would maybe put single-family homes there instead of apartments or something that would support the school. So really, this is looking at it from a long-term play, and WSU being located in our city. The advice we've gotten from other folks that have had these kind of situations is don't let them surplus that property. You're going to wish you had it, and you're going to want to keep that campus intact and try to keep it functional. Now, if we go through a planning process that says it absolutely is not necessary, then we're done and we're out, but...
And then we would surplus.
I believe the question, though, that Councilmember Huffaker is asking is, why us and why not WSU with this grant? Is there some requirement?
They not able to get this grant?
That they're not able to do this?
No. WSU's primary goal from the top down is to sell the property for budget reasons. So they've been given the directive to sell. So this is us going to WSU and saying, we want you in our community, we want you to be a part of it, we want you to preserve this campus. And that's what they did in Tri-Cities, that's what they're doing in Prosser. Basically, the community needs to go to WSU and say, hold on a minute, maybe this is not the appropriate sale to make. And right now, WSU has severe budget problems, so they're surplusing property all over the state. We're asking them to hold on the surplus to make sure it's not, it's, it's a move that isn't regretted later.
Yeah, the others, you know, the school district still has to write a first refusal. So if the school district, if they went out to sell it, the school district could buy it, and then you would have no housing. So the idea is if you can keep WSU entitled long enough, where you could do the ecology work, do the other work, and then perhaps get a developer who either on a lease or something could put in housing that's more consistent with what WSU wants, maybe that's a win-win for us. We're not really spending city dollars here, we've got city time. There's been a lot of momentum around sort of these research institutes in our valley and understanding with WSU. I mean, I'm the first one to tell you that until I was mayor, I never walked in one of those buildings. The most diverse spot in our community is in those research institute, those places, there are people from everywhere in there. So I sort of agree, is what's the city's role? And I think first set is, I think it's okay for us to take the ecology grant and do the work, make sure that 75 grand is spent accordingly, perhaps get someone in there who will do the same model as we have over in the Tri-Cities. If not, if ultimately ends up getting sold for housing and the city's not in the middle of it, then that's probably a better option than having the school district buy it and let it sit for 30 more years. So I think trying to figure out some momentum around what can happen there and trying to, as we do lots of things, is try to make sure housing goes there.
And I think maybe, maybe what you're getting at, Mark, the question is, the folks here locally really need researcher housing, and they, they want it.
Right. Actually, what I was after was, if I owned that property and I were selling it at WSU, I would be doing this so that I knew what the value is part of the appraisal. I'm just, you know, it's just, who should be doing this is, you know? You know, do we have to do it? Are we, are we being a white knight again?
No, we're, we're doing exactly what Spokane did with U District. We're taking the initiative to do community planning around that site. And that's what Spokane did with U District, to get things, get the university, university doesn't think that way. So that's, that's what we're, I don't look at us being a white knight. I look at us being, having an opportunity to do some planning in the heart of our city. So...
Right. As a part of our valley, our future plan, and you all received the bridge booklets, as the mayor spoke about, and what we're hearing is that this provides the community with some time to really explore and develop the partnerships with WSU, and for the communities to say to WSU, you're important here, and here's how we can expand your presence. And then to let the process, again, the city is facilitating. And so then to let the process evolve and see what comes out of it.
Hopefully, we're nothing more than a point guard to begin to assist, right?
Yes.
Then someone else gets to get the dunk. But right now, we're, I think, trying to facilitate.
I mean, again, my concern, you know, you mentioned we don't have a lot of money in this because we're getting the grant to do it, but we have staff time. Well, staff time is money, and if we, you know, that's just my concern, and I want, I wanted to get the big picture, and I appreciate it.
Personally, yeah, as long as it, we don't have a lot, we're not making a major investment here, but, you know, I really like the idea of at least trying to make some effort to facilitate the kinds of housing that would benefit, you know, that, that program out there. I think that's a, like, a great, as a mayor, you know, you can't have this thing in your community all these years, and you don't know what they're doing out there, you know, counting fruit flies or whatever they're doing. But at some point, you know, this, this facility has a real important impact in our community, and I think if we can help them, again, I'm not advocating we go out and build housing and those kinds of things, but, but certainly if we can make that, make that happen, it's, I guess, the sad commentary here is that we're the ones that have to advocate for their benefit and that they don't see, see that to do it for themselves. I guess that's the...
Yeah, and I think, you know, WSU's having issues financially. They've got a new dean of ag who's new to the whole process. We met him three or four weeks ago, told him how important the research center is, making sure it stays here, but he's getting pushed financially in 100 different ways. And for to say the local region is willing to sort of, not spend money, but facilitate, I think he's thrilled as to say, let's, you know, it's great to have the city take it on for a little while and see where it goes. He doesn't have the capacity to do that, and you know how these, you know, these little land deals are that are far away from the central campus. It's like, you know, so I think we're trying to do the right thing.
Yeah. And I would note, I've been researching the other WSU campuses. WSU Vancouver is located like 12 miles outside of the city. It's out in the sticks. I was just in Prosser, WSU Prosser, two and a half miles way on the other side of the freeway. And so when you think about WSU here, it's actually in our city, and it's actually, so when we talk about our valley, our future, and develops and some research emphasis, it's actually in the city and not out in the stick somewhere, which is a pretty amazing thing. And so, anyway.
I'll bet it was out there when it was built.
No, it wasn't.
That's exactly right.
Not 12 miles, but... All right. I would, I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign an inter-integrated planning grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology for the evaluation of the environmental contamination and the planning of ultimate use of the property owned by Washington State University.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markart, to authorize the mayor to sign an integrated planning grant with Washington State Department of Ecology to do research on the WSU property on Western Avenue and Spring Water. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Steve, parking garage, what's the latest?
Parking garage on the waterfront. Back in 2009, we developed, we rewarded the LRF funding, and anticipated with that funding was development of some parking in this southern node of the waterfront next to, inside downtown. And since that time, we've obviously had the Pibis Market open, and now the Hilton. And so we went through, over this last year, we went through a very extensive alternatives analysis, looking at how would the, what would be the best expenditure of approximately $3 million towards parking. We looked at a parking deck over the sewer treatment pond, we've looked at parking to the south in some of those open lots, we looked at parking around the sewer treatment plant, plant. I think there was nine options we evaluated in the Public Works Economic Development Committee. We came down to two potential options, one being south of Pibis and doing a partnership there to incent some development there in the, in the gravel lot south of Pibis. And the second option was right across the street from Pibis, which would be between Biosports and the Works Gym. We actually requested a, through an informal proposal process, proposals from both those sites, and the south of Pibis folks decided not to submit a proposal, leaving us with the one site. Since that time, some additional work has been done to look at parking around the treatment plant pond. We evaluated this again in the Public Works Economic Development Committee this last week, and the consensus was to move forward with the site next to Gold's or Works Gym. So that site is owned by Celand Prime Properties LLC, and in order to develop a public-private partnership, we wanted to establish the principles of the partnership. We did this with the federal building as well through a memorandum of understanding. And so in this memorandum of understanding, it lays out some of the key components of what would happen through this public-private partnership. And effectively, what we're getting is, through this is 114 public stalls that would be available to the public 24/7, and 36 stalls that would be available to the public on weekends and nights. So 150 new parking spots available during the peak periods, which is Saturdays primarily. And then... during the peak periods, which is Saturdays primarily. And then, as I mentioned, 114 during the week. So this would be a three-story parking garage. And the city would own the top two decks, or not own, we would have a long-term lease on it. 30-year lease with a 20-year option to re-up. The parking garages, we hired DCI Engineering out of Spokane, who's done thousands of parking garages on the West Coast. And we learned a lot about parking garages, how they work, how to design them. And typically, a 30-year lifespan is about what you get in a parking garage before there's a major investment needed to rehab the garage. So that's why the 30-year lease term, at that point, we would evaluate, is there still a public interest? And likely, if there was, then there would probably need to be some capital inserted into the project in, in 30 years to keep it going for another 20 years. So that's the basis behind the lease arrangement. And, you know, we've, again, DCI Engineering has helped us with the cost estimating. And I think that's, those are the main points.
So we talked about this at Finance today. We've also talked about it at
Public Works.
Public Works. Really kind of looking at a couple of different options. We are going to do some parking underneath the walking bridge. I think we've decided to do that. The sewer fund will pay for most of that. The general fund will pay for some of it. We think there's maybe 40 stalls available there. The next issue was, do we go to the north and get up to where the, I call it Columbia Coal Store. I guess it's linkage now or whatever. We own some property there that we could put in roughly the same amount of stalls, 120 or so. By the time you landscape and do all that, you're $750,000, $800,000. Or do you go, so do you do that one, the middle one, or do you do the parking garage? And I think the consensus from Public Works Committee was, you do the parking garage and you do the stuff underneath the walking bridge. And you sort of wait for something else to happen further to the north. So that was sort of the consensus of that group. Finance Committee looked at it today. I think their discussion was, so if the ultimate bids come in, you know, at 3 million or under, are we all in? Is this, and I think Steve said, yeah, we're sort of all in if the bids come in at that sort of a price. So this is sort of the dip your toe in with Mr. Celand for a little while. And if the numbers come back in, you're building a parking garage next year, he is.
A couple things. Steve, put your PE hat on. What do we know about, about the ground? Do, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of fill created over the years with the railroad and whatnot. What do, what do we know about what sort of structural issues? Do we don't, do we have any history from when the buildings were built down there? What do we know?
We talked quite a bit about that. And a geotech evaluation has not been done, but we did say it's all fill, which we all know. And so the consensus was an understanding that they would either dig out 20 feet down and come back in with gravel if there's problems, or they'd sink piles like we did, like the hotel did, that goes under it. So that, that was, that's going in eyes wide open. What I, we're really looking at, what Mayor said is if the bids come in, there's, there's a two-step process in this, we're going to lease shared parking stalls for $100,000. So we're going to get a period, we have to do the math on the timing, but a period of time where we have shared parking stalls equivalent to a market value of $100,000. Celand is going to take that $100,000 and do a design, do the full design, which they'll look at geotech evaluation. They need to be comfortable that their cost estimates will be, because this would be a development agreement that would, they'd take the risk if it's an overage. And so they're going to do some analysis, some further design analysis, to make sure they're comfortable with the $3 million price tag. And that's part of what they would do.
And design is my other question. You, well, you, you've been on, on trips with me, like down in Phoenix, where the parking garages look like parking garages. And they really don't fit into the urban environment. What, what kind of design input control do we have so we get something that is complementary to what is happening down there? I mean, obviously, we have a mix of architectural styles, but, you know, a concrete bunker just isn't going to fit in.
Right. We, we get to agree on this, in this $100,000 work on what it's going to look like. Yeah. So there's, the two-step process would be then we'd kick loose, we'd go to the full design.
So we do have some input.
Yep. On what we're buying.
On, on appearance.
Yeah.
From all four sides.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I think it's, from the 30,000-foot level, it's the right place to put it in terms of, it's already a parking garage, it's close to the railroad tracks. But I do agree with you, Councilmember Kula, we did have some sort of, make it look decent in the neighborhood. It's going to be there for a long time. You want it to be complementary to Pibis. And quite frankly, the other two buildings that are there, and.
The hotel.
Yeah.
It's making a significant investment.
Yeah.
The view as you go across River Walk Crossing.
Yeah.
The, the other views corridors that we have on Arondo Street.
Yeah.
And, and I guess that's why I'm kind of, that's my curiosity, is why the site got moved there instead of over the ponds. I mean, I, I thought that was an ideal place because you cover up that pond, you get the parking a little more central there where it could be overflow for the convention center, because that's one of the convention center's big problems is parking. So I'm, I'm curious why the parking over the pond was eliminated.
When we looked at that analysis, the price came in at 4.3 million. So it was higher. It was more costly than what we had hoped for. And then from an operational standpoint of trying to operate the sewer utility, really the thought was that that would become a, a maintenance headache. And also, it, it does consume that property for future sewer use if something were to change. So that was, did I cover that?
Yeah, I think, when we talked about that, I guess it was a year or so ago, I think the consensus was that the wastewater, those folks that managed the wastewater treatment plant weren't comfortable sealing up that with a, because they'd have to go in and clean it with masks, whatever got stuff in there, and they'd have to be hosing it down. And, and so I think they, their preference was if we could find a different location, they would be much happier with it not being built over the EQ basin. So we've kind of gone away from that probably a year or so ago.
Yeah. And we, we looked at, you know, Spokane put tanks in, you know, all concrete tanks. So we looked at that option too, but that was really expensive, like seven or eight million dollars. So.
Good.
Yeah.
So we did meet with the hotel developers last week. They're excited. Things are on pace for, I think, next March. I had a couple of little issues we were dealing with, but their first question was, when's the parking going to be built? So they are anxious. And I think Steve Robinson and the folks at Pibis are also anxious for the parking to be built as well. So I think our timing is, we really got to sort of get, plug it away at this. All right. Any other questions for Mr. King? If not, I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Well, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Prime Properties LLC, establishing the framework for a public-private partnership for the construction of a waterfront parking garage.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Asparza, to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Prime Properties LLC, establishing a framework for a public-private partnership for the construction of a waterfront parking garage. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank, thank you.
Planning Commission Member Glenn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We had a vacancy recently in May by Tony Freitag, who was a great planning commissioner, but had to step away. And Rainey Simpson applied. She's a local attorney and very active in the community, currently involved with the Our Valley, Our Future process. Her application was reviewed by the Planning Commission at the last session and was unanimously a recommendation for you to consider for appointing her to that position. It would go through December 2018. And then should be, should she be appointed, we'd be back before you next year for a, a full appointment. Any questions for staff?
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-30, appointing the voting representative, Randy Simpson, to the Woodancey Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve Resolution 2018-30, appointing Randy Simpson to the unexpired Planning Commission term ending December 31, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
All right, item G. Let's fill some council positions. Allison, why don't you get us updated on the packet information? And then we'll sort of jump through the process if I can find my papers.
Okay. Good evening. Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. So at your last regular meeting on October, or on August 9th, almost October, thinking budget, you approved ordinance 2018-19, creating a five district and two at-large council voting system. So the next step is to determine council representation for the new districts and at-large positions. And so Resolution 2018-29 tonight reviews our actions taken to date and then makes those appointments. So I think it's important to note for this process in determining council representation, the new Washington State Voting Rights Act is not clear. And so the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Ruth Asparza, Steve Smith, and I sat and reviewed and have looked to the RCW 35A 13, or dot 180. Because our system has not been deemed illegal, we are opting in to the system. We would then follow the process by which those council members with the longest terms would serve out in the district. In the case for where there is more council members than one, we'll need to go through a process of determining a reassignment. You can either do that by having an agreed-upon assignment, or by flipping a coin or drawing out of a hat, in order to determine the representation for those other districts. So I think at this point, the mayor wanted to take you through a process to determine that representation. And then we can fill out the resolution and get that approved this evening. And then the city, our staff is preparing postcards to populate with information on your district representative, a map of the district. Those will be ready to be prepared and sent out to all households in each district by the effective date or shortly thereafter, mid-September. So we are marching along in the process and we can let the mayor take it from here.
Okay. So we did meet with Steve Smith and I and Councilmember Asparza. Mayor Pro Tem met last week and went over sort of a process for how we would do this. Obviously, state law is going to dictate most of what we're doing. So I think the first thing, just out of process, is you all have a copy of the maps. And I'm just, I'm not going to ask you to confirm, but I'm just gonna, we are working under a map that says all of you are living in the districts in which this map shows you. And if that's not the case, then you need to let us know because we certainly can't allocate districts unless you're living where you, we think you're living. So that being said, obviously, Councilmember Kula is the only person living in District 5. So I think it's probably pretty simple to put Mark in District 5, since that's where he lives. And he's the only one there. And I'll misspell your names. And Mark, you're a 2019 up?
Yes.
Okay. So that one seems pretty simple. I think if you go to District 2, Councilmember Bailey is the one with the longest term. He's up in 2021. Mike and Lyle are up in 2019. So under the RCW, since you have the longest term, you are the one that gets to stay in District 2. And you're a 2021.
Right.
All right. For District, and then sort of, Lyle and Mike go over into La La Land. It's over here.
Thanks, Jim.
We're used to being there. Yeah.
You get picked in the second round here.
District, District 3 is more interesting because both Keith Huffaker and Ruth Asparza both have 2021 terms. So I don't know any other way to do this other than to flip a coin and the winner gets District 3, and the loser ends up in La La Land with probably Linda. Linda, who's got a 2019 spot, really doesn't have a spot for her. So how do you guys want to do it? I have a quarter.
Let's flip a coin.
Okay. So how do you want to do this? Heads, it's Ruth. Tails, it's Keith?
Perfect.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm going to let it hit the ground.
Keith just got it.
It is heads. There's your quarter. So heads is Ruth. So Ruth gets council position number three. And you're a 2021. And Keith ends up in La La Land with Linda. So at this point, our attorney has told us that if you're interested in sort of selecting spots, we can sort of do that as we wish. I gave you guys an email I got from Linda Harold. Linda is in Masawa, Japan today. But she asked specifically if she could be put in District 1. And she has a 2019 date. Anybody opposed with putting Councilmember Harold in District 1? Anybody interested in District 4?
I'll do District 4, if nobody else wants it.
Lyle and Keith, at-large, A and B, both would have different days, right? So Lyle, you'd be a 2019.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry for my spelling.
That looks great.
Yes, because both the at-large need to be offset.
Yeah.
So I would say, I think what Councilmember Kula just talked about is the staggering of the at-large, I think is probably something that would be positive for the city. My personal opinion is I like the fact that District 1 is going to have an open seat I think that's about as good as it gets. Questions, comments from you guys?
The only other oddity that we have is that, you know, with eight elected officials, there's five on one cycle and three on the other. That always seemed a little odd to me that it wasn't.
I don't know how that ended up happening.
Four and four, for just general continuity purposes.
I guess we should add at the bottom that the mayor is up in 2019 as well. So.
You know, what, you know, I've wondered about that too, Mark. It seemed like at some point though, wasn't it, we, there was a period of time we went through, there was a bunch of resignations and this and that and the other. It shouldn't have changed it.
No, the term, the term stayed the same. It would have started with the initial elections forming the council somehow.
Yeah.
And most likely, those that had the highest votes got the longer terms. And so that was probably one or the other.
Right.
Yeah. And then the others were on a two-year.
Yeah.
All right. So I think we have an ordinance.
Resolution?
Excuse me, I knew that, a resolution. So I'll turn the mic off and we'll turn it over to the council for any action they may have.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt a Resolution 2018-29, assigning voting, or council, assigning council members to the voting districts that were established specifically as follows. District 1 to be represented by Councilmember Harold, serving through 2019, or that term, serving through 2019. District 2, Councilmember Bailey, serving in that position, that term through 2021. District 3, represented by Councilmember Asparza, that term running through 2021. District 4, represented by Councilmember Poyer, that term running through 2019. District 5, represented by Councilmember Kula, that term running through 2019. At-large Position A, represented by Councilmember Markhart, that position running through 2019. At-large Position B, represented by Councilmember Huffaker, that position, that term running through 2021.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Kula, and a second by Councilmember Markhart, to appoint council districts as shown on the map and as described by Councilmember Kula. That would be adoption of ordinance number, or Resolution number 2018. That would be adoption of ordinance number, or Resolution number 2018-29. Discussion?
I'll just fix that up.
We good with that?
We are. We're just forwarding.
So I will say that, it's the only way it can be done that I think makes sense. I'm sad that both Mike and Linda and Lyle are sort of in no man's land, or having to run for one seat, which I think is, makes my heart a little heavy today. But I think it's, I think for what we've done in trying to get districts in the right spot, I think that's about as good as we can do. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item on today's agenda is item number H, and I think you all have a copy of a small little agreement with Chelan County PUD. We get our fuel for our police vehicles at the PUD pumping station, we all have cards. The PUD just passes along their rate, plus I think 10 cents a gallon or something, for keeping track of everything. That agreement ends this August, it was a 10-year agreement. If it was me, we could have done the handshake, but apparently the PUD would like us to sign a three-month addition or something like that. So that is in front of you for your discussion. And I really think the motion would be just to authorize the mayor's signature on the interagency agreement.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement regarding the fueling of motor vehicles.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor's signature on Amendment One to the interagency agreement regarding fueling of motor vehicles between the Public Utility District Number One in Chelan County and the City of Wannachy. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah.
Mayor's report. I don't know that I have much. Finance Committee met today, Public Works Committee met last week. Still working on some preliminary numbers for the budget. You'll see the first round of the budget sometime in September, or I'll see it sometime in September. We did go through a little bit of water comp plan stuff today at Finance. You'll see the water rate adjustment sometime in September. I think we're still setting that up for the 6% rate that we've talked about. Allison, what else is going on?
I think, I don't know if you want Steve to give an update on federal building process, just that we're, we've gone through a process with our employees entering into schematic design.
Yeah, continuing to work on, again, all this stuff with the internal stuff. We did have our first condominium association meeting, the condominium association between us and local hotels, so that went well last week. We're going to spend a little bit of money to fix the fountain underneath there that isn't working correctly, so, or at all. So we plan to have that going, hopefully in the spring. Most of the rest of the stuff over there is fine, discuss security issues and those sorts of things. At some point, we'll end up like the PUD and others with a badge, and that's how you get in and get out, and some of that stuff. So that stuff's all, seems to be going pretty well.
Positive feedback this week on Red Apple Roundabout?
Yeah, I got lots of, kudos to staff. I got lots of positive, I know Red Apple Road's only been open for two days, and I already got two calls. Spring Water, I've gotten two comments on how well that is. I got comments of how you're spending all those little thin layers of asphalt they're putting up. I got great positive, other than they just don't know how we're doing it all, because there's a lot going on. So kudos to staff for getting that all sort of open. Are we going to get Lewis and Clark open by Wednesday?
Yep, we'll have the, scheduled to have a pay next week for school. We still have some punchlines items, but that's the, that's the schedule.
Okay. Good. So I think most of that stuff's, I think, cracking along pretty good.
That's good. Usually, they don't get done before school starts.
And, you know, roundabouts are very controversial, so, but again, I've heard positive comments on both the ones at Appleland and Red Apple Road, and then the one at Spring Water as well. And I've driven both of them, and they seem to be working very, very good, so.
You ready?
Yep, go.
I'm going to add my kudos to the roundabout at Spring Water, it works really well. I know you wouldn't ever believe your.
I know, I didn't think you'd ever say that, yeah.
I think the way it got designed, it fits that intersection well, and so far, it seems to be well. Now, the one thing I haven't seen is pedestrian interaction yet, but it's well done.
Yeah, that one's, that's impressive one. Seems to flow.
For the amount of cars that go through that intersection.
Flows nicely.
I had some serious doubts, but I think the way it was set up, the angles where people aren't having to turn too hard to make a left-hand turn through there, worked out well.
Yeah. All right. Councilmembers, what do we have going on in your sort of stuff? I know Keith, you got something on maybe waste management and a few other little things.
You should, you should have received an email today forwarded from Tammy, and then in your packet tonight is a little deal with waste management. So they're struggling with the recycling issues. There's a couple of big things, and one of them has been kind of lacking for a while, and that's educating everybody on what can be recycled and what shouldn't be recycled, because if we recycle contaminated waste, it's a huge problem. And for a long time, we were supposed to be sorting it out, and we didn't do a real good job of sorting out the contaminated material, because China would still accept it. And then they decided that they would only take a 3% contamination rate, and we still far exceeded that, and so they totally cut us off. So now, everybody is struggling trying to figuring out, figure out what to do with our recycled material, and there's just not a lot of good answers. There's just not a lot of money in it, and so therefore, our waste management is struggling with it, with the rate that they're getting paid right now. So they're asking us for a bump in the pay, in the rates, which would be a permanent bump. And Rob, I want to thank you for the letter that you got from some of the other people you know, who highly recommended, rather than offering them a rate increase, that we should be looking at a surcharge until things maybe get stabilized back out in China, where then we can go back to our normal rates. I think if we're going to work with them, that's what we should offer them. The only thing I'm going to say is that we do enjoy a pretty low rate compared to what some of the other cities in Wannachy, or cities in the Chelan County are paying. Some of them are paying almost double what we pay, and they don't take glass or plastics, I believe it is. So those are the kind of things that are out there. I know Brenda at Chelan County Solid Waste has a meeting next week with other counties, and everybody's struggling trying to figure out what are we going to do for the future. So my recommendation is, is that we should go back to waste management and offer to pay a surcharge for a while, until things get figured out, one way or the other.
So who's our, are we, have we handed this off to Aaron, just as he used to work for Waste Management? Or, Rob, who's, who's the city contact here for kind of getting back to waste management?
Yeah, it would be either myself or Aaron. We'd work on it probably in tandem. I had experience on solid waste contracts in my former life, West Side, so, and that's who the letter came from, was a consortium of cities on the West Side facing the same issue. And so, yeah, you, it's still unclear. We need to have our city attorney review the contract, because, and give us his opinion about whether we could say, thanks but no thanks, we're going to stick with the current rate, and we need to do that still. But to answer your question, it'd be Aaron and I.
Okay. Well, I'm totally fine with you guys sitting down with Waste Management, and I think I like Councilmember Huffaker and the group on doing a surcharge, so we can come out of it if we need to. We need to be partners with them. Man, but I would anticipate you'll, you and Aaron will sort of get us something and meet with Steve and.
Just, just to summarize, though, what you learned this week, as the other, the other agencies within the valley have not made a decision on this yet, either.
No, that, I think that meeting is going to happen Wednesday, and Brenda's going to give me an update on Wednesday, so I can, probably, probably should take you in there one of these days and introduce your, to you, and just so you know who she is and.
Sure. So it would be, it would be good to find out what their approach will be, because I would, if they're not going to accept a surcharge and we do, then we.
I understand.
Yes.
Where are the recyclables going now? China's not here. Are they just piling up somewhere?
Where have they been going?
That's a really good question, and we don't have a lot of good answers. We're guessing that some of it probably is ending up in landfill. The glass right now gets sent over to Spokane, gets ground up, and most of it comes right back here, and they use it as a cap on the landfill, because there's just not enough other uses for ground-up glass. And it's, because it's colored, you can't really recycle it and make new glass out of it because of the color. But the plastics are probably just going into the landfill. Probably a lot of them, or, yeah, people are looking for things out there, but we don't have a good answer at Solid Waste on what they're actually doing with the plastics right now. I think a lot of it is being stockpiled, trying to figure out what to do with it.
Of course, Spokane has an incinerator, so I know that they incinerate a lot of their waste, and so they're, they're willing to take the plastics.
Is that right? And they burn it, though.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So if we're paying an extra buck, and they're just putting it in the landfill, aren't we just giving them a extra buck to take our garbage? Yeah. Those are the answers we need to get really clear definitions on.
Yeah, that was always been my, you know, thing with the solid stream stuff, you know, haul it over to Spokane or Seattle, and then haul it back and put it in, you know, put it in our landfill, or some, something wrong with that picture, too. Yeah.
That's a little about like how you mail an envelope right now, right?
Yeah.
You go mail it, it goes to Spokane, right? They process it and they bring it back.
Yeah.
Put a stamp on it.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what we know for tonight, and hopefully we'll have more information in the next couple of weeks.
Perfect.
Okay, I have a comment. We tonight introduced two candidates for the executive director at the museum at 5:00. Of course, I don't know if we're there, but they were introduced today. We have two candidates, very good candidates, and we'll make a decision, the board will make a decision on Monday.
Monday, okay.
So the two top, Matt Cadman is one of the ones who interviewed, and then there was a lady from the Seattle area.
Kenny Sturgeon.
Yeah, from the, I think, the Pacific Sight and Center or something. So two good candidates, and they interviewed today, and I know they were having their little open public house right at 5:00 today, but obviously we.
Could convince them to do it on some other day, but Thursday?
We tried. We tried. They asked for our participation, and I said, Thursdays are tough, and so, yeah.
Would have loved to have been there.
Yeah, would have.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We do not meet next week, and we do not meet on the first week in September, so we will meet again on the 13th. All right.
Very good.
Everybody, we're adjourned.